Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we get a roll call, please? All are present. Thank you. And item number four is audience participation. I believe we have one this evening. Okay, please approach the podium and introduce your name and address, please.
Dustin Mariachi, 21627 Marine Street. I appreciate the chance to participate in front of the board. I'm very proud of calling sure I'm home for the last sixteen years, both my sons at Lake Shore and my candidate. I think it's all well done.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody can hear me. Dr. DePonyo, it's been really nice to kind of back and forth with my concerns that I've had. But I'm really asking the board for full back to school. I think that the two full days, I think, is a good stop. But I think, I think they're all also starting to realize that, you know, this is really affecting our children. I mean, we're really missing out on their education. We're trying to get caught up with what happened last spring. I have an honor student, another really bright sophomore candidate, and, you know, the support, this district supports the development of social emotional skills, creates a safe environment for learning, addresses nutritional needs and facilities, gives them the activity, and harms of the schools continuing to be closed is really wreaking havoc on the social emotional educator hall of the students in the district. I don't understand who are protecting by continuing to have our kids out of school as long as they can. My son, my oldest son is in ninth grade, and he's telling me he's learning absolutely none right now. Now, I think that the district is doing a good job, but they can virtually, I know it's been very difficult, but school provides so much nurturing, so much learning for our children. And I think that I'm really asking that the board here moves a lot faster with return to learning. Again, I applaud the superintendent for the communication we need, but the reality is is that myself and a lot of the parents in the district really believe that their kids are missing out and they need to return to school. I don't understand why it's coming so slow. I don't understand why it's half days and then now two days. I don't understand why we're just going to go back three days, four days, and five days all in a row. Because our kids, our kids are in sports right now, my son's in football right now, you know, five days a week or two hours a day. The kids are leaving at each other's homes, they're going to Costco, they're going out to friends' houses, they're still socializing. I have a hard time understanding what exactly what protecting. You know, everybody that I know, I applaud teachers, they did, this district has done a wonderful job of educating both my sons. I can't thank enough for all the work that you do down the board supporting that. But I truly believe that they need to return to school and it's harming them emotionally. They leverage each other's classmates when they're in school. It's, there's so much that we're missing out on right now. And I don't understand why we're not returning to school full time. I'm asking you to consider this because myself and other parents are really, are really at our end of our rope. And I, you know, I cannot supplement, myself and my wife work full time jobs. I'm a state farm agent, my wife works for a defense company in Fraser. And, you know, we're trying to balance, we're lucky that our children are as old as they are, lucky that they're twelve and fourteen and they can stay home and work independently. But, you know, already, we're already, I appreciate that this is a long platform here, we're already dealing with technology as a disruption for our youth, right? It's kind of like, here's a liquor kid, you know, half in, right? You know, and, and that's already a disruption already. Now we're leaving them at home. You know, I really feel like we're leaving them, you know, in a bad place. They need to return to school. They need to return to school. They need to return to school. Okay? Thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate the board, I really appreciate the superintendent with his back and forth, the dialogue, emails, and calls on me. But again, my students are learning nothing, my children are learning nothing right now in Kennedy and Lake Shore, where they're all in the home. I don't understand what exactly what protecting. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for speaking this evening. I appreciate your, your willingness to speak. We appreciate that. All right. Superintendent's report, Dr. DePonyo, please.
So I just want to bring the board up to speed on a handful of items, and I also have Rochelle assist with a couple of things that I wanted to share with the board. And, and thank you, Mr. Mariachi, for, for your comments and, and your, your dialogue as well. I think it's important that we're considering everything as we, we work through this. It's, it's certainly a remarkably challenging time for everybody, for our families, for our parents, for our kids, for our teachers. This is not easy on, on anybody. And so, just to, to kind of recap where we're at. So with the Return to Learn Plan, the, with the committee work that was done and the recommendations that were made, Lake Shore was one of nine school districts in Macomb County that returned for in-person instruction. And we did so on a very limited basis for the first two weeks of school. Twenty-five percent of our student capacity would be permitted in at half-days. The half-days were, were occurring and continue to occur this week so that our teachers have an opportunity to engage with their students in person as well as devote time to our virtual students. The decision was made by the district that we would not outsource our virtual learning to a third-party company, and that's, that's created an additional burden for our staff to be able to, to have a foot in the, the real world and a foot in the virtual world. And they continue to work through that. After we spent those two weeks testing out our safety protocols, since no one has entered school in this situation, and I've shared this with the board previously, that in spite of my twenty-seven years of experience, this was my, my first year of school. Because I had no idea, as none, none of us did, what we would be able to do in terms of mandating masks, hand washing, hand sanitizing, testing our, our safety protocols, the social distancing aspects, would we be able to pull that off? So after about the first week, we realized with the staff feedback, and we've conducted a variety of surveys, in fact, I think a survey went out today to our students, but surveying parents, surveying staff, and, and now surveying our students, what's working, what's not working? And the overwhelming theme has been, from our family's perspective, that they need more, more support. It, it's not been adversarial, it's not been hostile, it's been a plea for help. It's been a legitimate concern by our families that their kids are losing out. And as a father myself, there's no, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. When your kids are not in school, it has, it has an impact. In spite of our best efforts, and I feel like we are giving our very best effort, it's not for a lack of trying, it's not for a lack of innovative thought, it's, it's really navigating uncharted waters. So as we got through the first two weeks, you know, actually after the first week, I think everyone felt pretty safe that we could increase the groups from twenty-five percent to fifty percent, which is the maximum under Phase Four of our Return to Learning Plan. A-day, B-day, and alternate days. Again, looking at that, that time of devoting our teachers' efforts to virtual in addition to in-person, we go this week, actually will complete this week with half-days. Beginning October the fifth, for the month of October, we will increase those to full days. This will introduce lunch, which has not yet been introduced to the, the situation. That'll be another test of safety protocols. You know, the, the social distancing will continue to be a, a focus of, of what we do and how we operate, and we'll continue to survey staff to see how things are going and receive feedback from them on, on what we need to do. So far to this point, I'm aware of two, two staff members that were tested based on symptoms they were having. They, actually, one was based on a close contact to a spouse, and then the other one was based on symptoms, both tested negative. We've had no positive tests in the district, either staff or students, to our knowledge at this point. We would be notified by the Macomb County Health Department if that were the case. So to this point, we're, we're very thankful that things are going, what I would categorize as, as smooth as we could hope for. We've been concerned about the backslide of mandatory quarantines from the Health Department and the burden that that would put on our resources, our human resources, of making sure that we have staff capable of delivering instruction and covering classrooms. In, in the meantime, as we continue to try and make sure that we address everything that we possibly can to the best of our ability with the resources that we have, we look for different ways to connect with students, we look for different ways that we can utilize support staff, that we can utilize other staff, that their roles have changed, and redeploy those staff to assist in particular areas where families might need additional help. So for example, this morning, I spoke with a mother who has two children who are not yet in school, they're not school age, and has three children that are at one of our elementaries, desperate for, for help. And same situation, concerned about the kids' futures, concerned about the impact that this will have on them, concerned about their well-being. And so we're going to utilize some support staff to check in additionally with those children when their teacher is not available because they're either working with other kids or small groups, or they are working face-to-face. It's one of the many things that we continue to, to juggle, all the while making certain that our most vulnerable people susceptible to serious illness, our staff through COVID, are, are protected, and making certain that, that our kids as well, which obviously is, is a critical concern. Some of the additional things that we're, we're deploying, I think they went out at the end of last week, are some instructional kits that I think you'll find, if you, looks like Oprah, if you look underneath your seat, you'll find, yeah, yeah, no. Anyways, Rochelle, do you want to talk a little bit about those instructional packets and, and what the idea was behind this?
So as part of our Return to Learning Plan, our staff spent considerable amount of their time working on, it was very clear through emergency room faculty that these students and families chose one hundred percent virtual, that does not mean students should be on at once for six, seven, eight hours a day. And so the grade level teams, case study five, and our cognitively impaired groups looked at those hands-on activities that we would usually have in the classroom that assist with literacy development, with different things that they would need, and they created a grade level list. We partnered with a local company called Learning Ism, so they, we gave them the list, they go search for the best for us. You guys see your packets, they have a grade level rating already on them, they're all packaged together. So in kindergarten through second grade, you'll see things like the reading sheets, and you'll see mathematics, letters, and numbers. So it's not just games with the learning of letters and sounds. We have also thought about our families who don't have a space to set up. You know, there's a lot of things about setting up your learning space, or maybe for reading time, and that's just not the reality. We have homeless students, we have students that have challenges. So by having a bag and having some mobility and then give them a working place and something to contain all of their things in additionally, their textbooks will fit in there, we're kind of creating a school in the bag and then have resources. So the teachers will be able to explain the resources to them, work through that, send them a video demonstration of here's what I want you to do, but the children are then working off-screen so that they're engaging in instructional activities that are developmentally appropriate. So we're really excited to partner with a local partner and the teachers to have this. The other thing is you guys see crayons and pencils and all those little things that, you know, normally we share, and we put it in big box maybe in the classroom and just making sure that all were to be the best of us to what they need and what we're to.
Thank you. And so, just to summarize, you know, our goal is to return to, to the traditional quality education that our students have, have received here at Lake Shore. But again, we continue to, to measure each day. We want to move aggressively, but not at the risk of, of potential issues and setbacks that, that might occur. We have weekly updates with the Macomb County Health Department, so we're, we're getting guidance from health experts, and of course, the feedback that we receive from, from our community, both families and, and staff. And, and we'll just continue to, to take this day by day and hopefully improve upon previous day so that day so that we can we can continue to grow in this situation. The the long-range goal with this is not how many days we can get in at the start of the school year, it's how many days we can get in in the school year. And again, there's a huge amount of unknowns here, and we don't want to drive decision-making based on fear. That's, we want it to be based on facts, and of course, we always want to be the leaders in in how we operate, but I I think there's much that we can learn from from neighboring districts that have have done different things. I think there's much that people can learn from Lake Shore on on how we've opened our schools. But again, you know, we we will, we'll take a look at this on a daily basis, and hopefully we continue to grow and help our families as best we can while we're making sure that our staff and students are safe. So, you know, and finally, just, I I've I've looked into the eyes of our teachers, who I have great concern about just how tired they are already. You know, it's a demanding job to be a teacher, and you you wear your heart on your sleeve and and you pour your heart into what you're doing, and a lot of the interaction that I've had with staff to this point is is very reminiscent of of how people might feel when it's, you know, late May and kids are are anxious to get going for the summer and teachers are a little bit wore out. They're doing the absolute best they can. I appreciate the the same, at the same level, the concern that our our community has had, that that conversation that I had this morning with with his mother with her hands full, people trying to get back to work. It's a tough situation all the way around. So I continue to to ask for grace and understanding for for everybody involved here because we're all in a very challenging situation. Hopefully, we can get through this and and get get on back to the way Lake Shore once was and learn from this. So with that, I'll I'll take any questions that the board might have.
I have one, I just want to clarify.
Certainly.
Notification from the community health department would be for remote students as well as in-school students.
Yes, yes, any any student or staff member associated with Lake Shore Public Schools that would test positive for COVID-19, Lake Shore would receive notification. So we we have, we have a briefing each Wednesday with the Health Department, and then, you know, if if you have a positive case, those those conversations usually hop off the call afterwards and there's updates, but, you know, obviously, it doesn't wait for a week once there's a known case. From what I understand, we haven't experienced it yet, that that conversation takes place immediately. Yeah, Mike?
Well, you mentioned the decision not to outsource our virtual learning at positive screen. I kind of have seen a little bit of that screen, our teacher, that had difficulty bringing in and managing their their virtual learning model out of the schools. Is there any plan to kind of change how that's going to work, maybe incorporating some of their virtual learning into teachers who are in virtual, having to join that larger pool of virtual students for the days they're not in in school, or, you know?
So as we move through this, there's certainly going to be an aspect of of fluidity of of student movement from teacher to teacher. Those virtual teachers have a a class list, just as if if you took the technology away, those 25 kids that are there virtually are, you know, take them out of the virtual world, they're they're 25 kids. If you put them into a classroom, teacher, student. The moving kids back and forth, there there are some, you know, issues that would come along with that. You know, we believe in the 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 foundation of developing relationships with students as a foundation for learning. And so, you know, to to have a student kind of drop in and out of your class based on the the nature of whether they're virtual or they're in-person presents a challenge both for the student as it does for the teacher. So we're going to try and avoid that as much as we can. You know, the, we will certainly anticipate that as we near the end of the first semester, that there will be families that will say, you know, we were virtual, we'd like to come back. There's a lot of people, it's this wait-and-see, they want to see what's going to happen. And so I think those those families, as they see us have successful school days, they would consider having their kids come back. When they do, we have to make sure that we're putting them in space that doesn't exceed our social distancing safety protocols that that we committed to with our Return to Learning Plan. And so, you know, maintaining that six-foot social distancing whenever possible is is something that we will continue to look at. And at some point, if we decide, all right, we feel that we are safe, we're comfortable, whatever the reason, you know, with the the nature of the vaccine that might come out and, you know, how many cases are in Macomb County if we move into Phase Five or Phase Six, and we're now post-pandemic, then we'll have to remove some of the language of the Return to Learn Plan, and of course, we we recertify that each month. So if we need to make changes with that because we've moved into a different era of this time period, then then we propose those changes to the board to to certify.
I have one more question, kind of related. I'm assuming to, gotta be some scenario employment, back to our region, they should use our requirements returning. Is there intended to where we would make a decision, or the health department would make a decision as the state is to?
Sure. So so the 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 risk assessment is based on, first, how prevalent COVID-19 is in Macomb County. And although today there was an increase in cases, the trend in Macomb County has been one of of, you could say, positive. It's a, it's a grade-level risk assessment, A, actually, there's, there's even above an A, it's, it's just low risk, but A is the the best level of risk. A is low risk, right? I'm going to butcher this, confuse everybody. And E is the highest risk. You don't want to be E, you want to be towards A. And it's based on two categories, the percentage of positive tests and the number of cases per million. And so our positive test risk assessment is A. So that's, that's good for Macomb County. Our cases per million is a C, which is higher risk. The overall risk assessment defaults to the lowest of the two grades. So we got an A, we got a C, we get a C on the report card. So that that's where we're at in terms of county risk right now. The next thing is presence of cases within your buildings. Right now, we have zero cases present within our buildings that we are aware of. It would be naive of us to assume that that will be the case all the way along, but for right now, we have zero cases. The next level of risk is, are cases just present in your buildings, or is there transmission occurring within your buildings? So if there's a a student that tests positive for COVID-19, they'll conduct contact tracing to see where they got it from. And if it came from outside of the building, we still assume a lower level of risk. If they trace it back to another positive case within the building, now the risk becomes higher. At some point, Mike, the, what would occur is if transmission is occurring within one of our buildings, the Macomb County Health Department would make a recommendation to us to to close that building for a period of time to to stamp down the transmission of COVID-19. The other way that we would go into a situation where we would go 100% virtual is if we were moved, we were moved back from Phase Four, which we're currently in, to Phase Three, which is where we were last spring when all schools were shut down. Based on on where cases are right now, I I wouldn't imagine that that would be the case, but each day comes new information, so we've got to take it day by day.
Do you have any information on private schools? I am not aware of, I I don't have any information on on private schools that that have opened
up in a environment that does not require social distancing. Our, within the county, I'm aware of two school districts of the nine that have opened where they've had cases of COVID-19, where either students or teachers had to be quarantined as a result of that. But I I do not know, we we don't receive that information in terms of how private schools that, you know, might have just opened without, you know, the the same level of safety protocols.
And any idea of my slide?
I have no idea. Yeah, that's a, that's a up-there sort of decision, and we haven't been made aware of any, we don't, we're not hearing any rumors of such a thing.
Are our sports are playing?
Correct.
Are these kids also going to, are they all online?
There would be, I would imagine, and I don't know definitively, there would be some kids that attend in the hybrid model, and some kids, I would imagine, attend 100% virtual. But again, I don't know definitively.
So first of all, to anyone, if you're just watching online, we are all currently presently located in the Taylor Building, socially distantly, like Joe's not distracted by a butterfly off the side of his back. So I'm just looking, and it looks really weird because Joe's talking like this.
Actually, I was, there was, there is a butterfly over there.
Right. Before I say what I want to say, I want to preface this with a great deal of appreciation for our teachers and staff who are working to make this as as effective as possible and to express my empathy for for folks like Mr. Maniachi and and for our parents that have to be under an incredible burden. I work in corporate America, and my whole life is basically conference calls, and there is always a screaming child in the background. It just doesn't matter, and and I just couldn't imagine having to facilitate a a work-life and trying to help your kids get along, and and we know that the best place for kids is is in the building. That being said, this is not going to come as a surprise to the to the folks on this board. I I still just want to state for the record that I do not support us being open in any form or fashion. I think we're creating an increased risk of transmission amongst our students and amongst our staff, and then conversely, out of the buildings into the families and communities that could create a greater health risk than than we should be willing to accept, especially as we continue to ramp up, as we phase in sports, as we do things like that. It is, in my opinion, creating a greater level of risk, and I'm I'm also just keen to wonder if, because I'm I'm hearing of the burnout of the staff, I'm I'm hearing of the emotional toll it's taking on them. I don't know if it's tenable to sustain that until May or June. But I I wonder if creating a more consistent environment of an all-virtual education, if that consistency would, one, help our staff to be less burdened, but, two, would would end up helping our children to succeed because they're having a more consistent educational experience. So that is, I I just want to state that for the record. I I will be voting no on the recertification of our plan later, and it will be for the exact same reasons. So that's all that I have. Thank you, Dr. DePonyo.
All right, so I'm moving on to agenda item, sorry, 6A, the extended, thank you, Dr. DePonyo. 6A, Extended COVID Learning Plan for the 2021 School Year, Ms. Weincoop, please.
Thank you. For those who are viewing at home, you are seeing on the screen the Extended Learning Plan project. Those who are just having a handout, so we can go over that. The good news is this is not as recent as long as the Return to Learning Plan certification, so just put that out there right from the beginning. So what I'm going to do is go over the legislative requirements that have changed since our Return to Learning Plan was approved. On August 20th, Governor Whitmer signed House Bill 5993 into law, and then had Public Act 149, and there are sections of that that require an additional plan. So this is not taking place of, we are not.
I don't want to stop you, but you mean to be sharing your screen because I don't see that on the.
Okay. There was nothing important on the slide, so I didn't miss anything.
That was great, okay. All right, so this is an additional plan. This is in addition to the remote plan that was already approved and is in practice. This does not require board approval, it does require approval by the ISD. So we're going over tonight what those additional requirements were and what is in our plan. Specifically, the legislators were looking at new entrances and sections that identified educational goals, instructional delivery, grading, and equitable access. So they were looking for some details that not all districts included in their original plan. I'm going to go over the overview, there is a link to the complete plan, and once that's approved and submitted to the state, we will have that posted on the website. There were 11 different items to be addressed in the Extended COVID Learning Plan. Out of those 11, seven were actually covered in detail in our Return to Learning Plan. So this evening, I'm not going to be going over those in detail, they'll be posted. I'm going to focus on the four that were not addressed in the detail required by this new plan. So you can see some of the other ones were a statement about student engagement, delivery of instruction, or academic instruction, how we're delivering it virtually, all of those things are very, very closely detailed in our remote learning plan. So in their detailed, the first, the first item was number two, which was educational goals. They are looking for a plan that specifically identifies goals for student achievement. They give specifications about it being increased student achievement, about it being validly and reliably measured using benchmark assessments, including assurance that it's aligned to state standards, and that these benchmarks are measurable. It's difficult to create measurable goals when you don't have baseline data. And so I appreciate the ISD working with us and creating a part of a plan that addresses that we will be identifying an increase in the number of students, but that that will be updated later because we don't have the baseline data, and once we get the baseline data, then we will be quantifying it as either number of students or percent of students who will be increasing the number reaching their goals in both mid-year and by the end of the year. So there is a goal for reading, there is a goal for math, there is a middle-of-the-year goal, and there are end-of-the-year goals. And can I just say, for all of my teachers and principals who have seen this, this is just continuous improvement. This is what we do every single year, where we look at our data, we see where our students are at, we measure the growth and the instructional goals and the systems we have in place to help our students meet that, and then support them with the supports and additional things that we need. So while the legislature felt this wasn't addressed in the plan, as schools, we do this consistently as a part of our continuous improvement plan. The end-of-the-year goals read exactly the same, that there will be an increase, and once we have the baseline data, we then can actually plug in some numbers from there that's aligned well to our baseline data, and again, that is just part of how we do continuous improvement process, and that is the structure that's already in place. The second part that we had not addressed was teacher and student interaction. The legislator had undone, in some ways, the days and minutes requirements, but they also wanted some accountability as far as FTEs and paying for students. So one thing that they're requiring is a two-way communication, which is very different than attendance. And when you talk about the stress of our teachers, some of it are things like these, these compliance pieces, they are not allowed to just take attendance in power school. I thank Dr. DePonyo and the rest of the superintendents for advocating continuously for this process to be streamlined. At this time, they're required to do an Excel spreadsheet with several logs, and they have to log for each student, even those who are attending in person. So this has nothing to do with whether we are 100% virtual, if we At this time, they're required to do an Excel spreadsheet with several logs and they have to log for each student, even those who are attending in person. So this has nothing to do with whether we are 100% virtual, if we are hybrid, if all of our students were in person under pandemic learning, we would still be required to keep this two-way communication. So our teachers are working hard to do this. Of course, we contacted them and are with them anyway, but it's the recording in the logs. You will see this visited at the end of the presentation when we talk about the monthly reports that you will need to the board. One of them is weekly communication and what the rates of connection with our students is, and this is based on this two-way communication. The next part is benchmark assessments. So this goes back to number two, when we're looking at establishing those goals. One of the things, again, that we have already done as part of our continuous improvement and as part of our multi-tiered system of support is we already have benchmark assessments in place, K through eight. These assessments meet all the requirements that compliance requires us to do through the legislation. So both our students and our teachers are not required to do additional testing or new testing. I would say the new thing is doing it remotely, which has its own challenges as we deliver these remotely. But we have a matrix for you to show K through eight, how they're delivering those benchmark assessments. And again, this is just part of our normal process and since it fits into the compliance piece, we're not asking them to do anything additional. This is important because this is our long-term look at students. We don't want to look at just what happened in the last six months. We need to be able to track them over time and that's one of the reasons you have a benchmark assessment that goes K eight, is so we can track grade levels, we can track both, we can track individual students, as well as our own systems that are in place by grade level. The next part of the plan in number 11 is the timeline. So when is student data, when are their benchmarks going to be given and when are parents going to be informed? So very similar testing to what we do every year. We do the NWEA MAP testing and so that has already begun at the middle school this week. Elementary will begin next week. We will go through the next three weeks. We do it again at the end of January through the first week in February and then the last is the end of May through the first of June. So if you think about those requirements where we have to reporting against mid-year goals and end-of-the-year goals, that fits nicely into what we already do with our benchmark assessments. For youngest learners, for reading, we have assessments called DIBELS and running records and theirs are slightly different timetables, but they're addressed under here. Parent notification is required within 30 days of the assessment. We also standardly do that, but we will be making sure that parents get the assessment of their students' benchmark goals and have that sent out within 30 days as we are required by the legislation.
Is there a reason that we're only looking at K eight in these couple of items?
Yeah, so that's what the requirements are. When you talk about benchmark assessments against reading and math, it's very difficult once you get to high school. They don't have a lot of normed tests and assessments that are designed that way when you think about how students aren't even put into the same math classes and what they're doing. So we have the PSAT and SAT suite of assessments, but they're really not benchmark assessments. That isn't part of this requirement, but I will tell you that our seniors are testing this fall because they didn't get their junior SAT test. I had the privilege of doing that last Wednesday with half of our seniors. And then all ninth graders will also be taking the PSAT because they missed their entry test and then right now, spring testing is scheduled to be done like it would any other year. You're welcome. So the last part of this legislation is that there are monthly requirements. So there needs to be reports to the board and there's three main aspects of that. The first one is that two-way communication log and it's supposed to be reported as the number of two-way communications that took place weekly. So you will be getting a weekly percentage number. You need to know that weekly falls under our pupil accounting, so a week is Wednesday to Tuesday, not Monday to Friday. So if you think about teachers again, keeping track of things and making Wednesday to Tuesday the new, the new week, so that will be reported out with our participation rate. So in the October meeting, you will have the weeks up until that time. The last, the next part is recertification of the preparedness and response plan. So when we reference that Return to Learning Plan, it needs to be recertified every single month and so that will need to be done. A particular focus in there is whether we're delivering instruction hybrid, virtual, in-person and what that means according to the plan. And then if we're making adjustments, any adjustments to health and safety protocols or if we're continuing as placed. And then the last part is that it's required that there be public commentary on the preparedness plan, any changes or not changes, and the communication records. And by having the public commentary in these as part of our board agenda, we fulfill that requirement. So Dr. DePonyo submitted this to the ISD. We did have our systems in place by September 15th as required. That was submitted to the ISD. The ISD will submit it to the state by October 1st. When that is accepted, then this will be in place and these processes start in October.
This only is going to be required.
Correct. Yeah, this does not require board, this does not require board approval.
Does the Department of Commerce need this?
Yes. Well, the ISD has to certify it first, but that was the same with the, yes, yeah. So first, the ISD has to certify it. So they're kind of putting the responsibility back to the ISDs. And again, our ISD took the approach that they did during the Return to Learning, that much of this was done by the superintendents and by the experts that they have in their fields to kind of narrate the different pieces and then the districts put in those that particularly, the narratives that particularly pertain to things that were individual for the district.
All right, we are moving on to agenda number seven A, the consent agenda. All right, motion by Mr. Denzler, supported by, we'll say, Mrs. Delong. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll move to seven B, the personnel report. Dr. Lewis, please.
Move to accept the employment of Laconda Bonner, medical assistant aide, Masonic Heights, effective September 2nd. April Trontal, medical assistant CNA Rogers Elementary, effective September 2nd. Rachel Klein, medical assistant aide, Violet Elementary, effective September 2nd. Crystal Marshall, medical assistant aide at Kennedy Middle School, September 14th. Jennifer Wilson, medical assistant aide, Lake Shore High School, effective September 14th. Lake Shore Federation of Support Staff, move to accept the retirement of Patricia Huey, SAC team leader at Rogers Elementary, effective August 28th, 2020, after 29 years of service. Stacy Patiglio, remedial specialist from Masonic Heights Elementary, resignation effective September 2nd. Felicia Williams, crossing guard at Violet Elementary, resignation effective September 2nd. Rochelle Wurzinger, special education teacher assistant, Rogers Elementary, resignation effective September 2nd. Recommendation to certain changes in the substitute wage rate scale. Move to approve the 2021, 2020, 2021 substitute wage rate scale, effective September 8th. Also, to approve the administrative support compensation schedule. That schedule has been modified to add the positions of medical assistant aide and medical assistant CNA.
There, we modified the substitute wage rate scale last year. So at this point, last year, the board approved modifications. Our current minimum wage in the state of Michigan is $9.65 per hour. That will rise to $9.87 per hour on January 1st, 2020. And we are constantly evaluating where we stand in respect to other districts. Within our substitute wage rate scales, we have addressed what we see as a significant discrepancy between us and neighboring districts and what they're paying their substitute teachers. So we have raised the compensation there. What we are seeing is a, not surprisingly, a dwindling number of individuals that are taking on substitute positions in this climate. Not every district, Mr. Colling posts their substitute wage scales. So we try to make them competitive. We take into consideration the support staff contract, the custodial contract, the secretarial contract, to ensure that the subrates are competitive there, but they do not exceed any of the compensation that you would see there. But most notably, we are seeing districts raise that are open, raise their substitute teacher compensation rates. And those historically have been below $100. We have raised ours to 115 this year with compensation higher for our district subs.
All right, anybody else? All right, just for the sake of ease again, Ms. Munger, will you do a roll call vote?
Mr. Colling.
Aye.
Mrs. Delong.
Aye.
Mrs. Bartle.
Aye.
Mrs. Ziegler.
Mr. Ziegler, sorry.
Mrs. Munger.
Aye.
Mr. Bakodick.
Aye.
And Mr. Denzler.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Agenda item 7C, recertification of COVID Preparedness and Response Plan. Ms. Weinku. Any discussion?
I'm voting aye on this.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Munger, another roll call vote, please.
Mr. Denzler.
So.
Mr. Bakodick.
Aye.
Mrs. Munger.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Mrs. Bartle.
Aye.
Mrs. Delong.
Aye.
And Mr. Colling.
Aye.
All right. Agenda item 7D, bid award carpeting and floor tile replacement at Shore's Childcare and Dr. DePonyo is going to handle this for us.
Move to approve a bid award to, I think it's, I don't have the language in for me. It's a, to flooring over that, I cannot see, I'm blind.
5975.
That's the one. That's, that's another motion, sorry.
Got it. All right. All right, motion by Mr. Colling and supported by Mrs. Delong. Questions or comments?
What fund are we making?
This is out of bond funds. They were the lowest three responsible, three bids that we received. We've done work with them before, I actually think this floor, and they've done the flooring of the media centers that we just remodeled.
Were we planning on doing this now or is this because we have the child there?
Well, we're taking advantage of that time period. You know, we, that space needs a facelift desperately, so we thought this would be a great time to get that done. George has really done a wonderful job of spearheading that. Rochelle's been heavily involved in the work of getting that program turned around. Of course, appearance makes a difference, so we want to place it, our families will be anxious to bring her in.
All right, roll call again, please.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Mrs. Bartle.
Aye.
Mrs. Delong.
Aye.
Mr. Colling.
Aye.
Mr. Denzler.
Aye.
Mr. Bakodick.
Aye.
And Mrs. Munger.
Aye.
All right, agenda item 7E, lacrosse team cooperative agreement. Ms. Weinku.
In an effort to provide our students with the opportunity to be competitive in the sport of lacrosse, Lake Shore Public Schools and Lakeview Public Schools have entered into a cooperative agreement in compliance with Michigan High School Athletic Association Handbook Regulation.
Motion, please.
Lacrosse team cooperative agreement.
All right, motion by Mr. Denzler, support by Mr. Colling. I'm in third discussion.
We're trying to restrict the development. We're in Lake Shore.
We've had lacrosse for the last two years and just to sustain the program, we don't have enough students, we need to do that. So we have a similar program in hockey, in fact, we see the agreement. One of the things they asked is, do you have other agreements with them? And we have one with hockey also. So both schools are looking at, we know our students want this, there's been enough interest. Losing last season in the spring, I don't think helps our growing program. And so rather than doing away with the program, how can we grow it by sharing together and giving the students the opportunity?
So is it going to combine the staff that would normally coach here and at the other school or?
There isn't a program at the other school.
Okay, so.
I think we're just, I think we're just trying to get enough students.
All right, okay.
That's what it really, when it comes down to, yeah, we needed more students.
All right, perfect. But if we're taking them and, yeah.
We're just playing sports with them. I want to be clear that the agreement is for sports, yeah.
Or the primary.
I'm sorry.
Primary school, taking care of this.
We are the primary school, yeah.
Is it a 50/50 split in money?
That's a great question. A 50/50 split of money.
The cost around that or something?
I think we can certainly get you that answer. You know, the cost of that program is pretty minimal. Right at this particular point, we're, you know, we're looking at pay for coaches and officials for gangs and perhaps, but, yeah, I can, I can get you that.
Okay. All right, I just like to see it as an alternative to losing a program. I'm happy to be able to keep an option for our kids, so I appreciate the.
I know, I believe they are important to me upon, but the truth is, we both want what's best for kids and I think cooperative agreements like this are good for all of our students.
All right, roll call again, please.
Mr. Colling.
Aye.
Mrs. Delong.
Aye.
Mrs. Bartle.
Aye.
Mr. Denzler.
Aye.
Mr. Bakodick.
Aye.
Mrs. Munger.
Aye.
And Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
All right, we are at board commentary and we're going to start with Mr. Denzler.
I don't know that I have a whole lot, just thanks to everyone for tuning in. Mr. Maniachi, I know that you and I don't necessarily agree, but I'm, I really do mean it, that I appreciate when people come and make their voices heard because that's, so it makes us a better board. And so I am grateful for that, just continuing to be so thankful for our staff. I know how difficult and complex and complicated this is and I know how our staff, just like every other challenge that they've faced with, are just taking it and giving it their all. And so very grateful for that and beyond that, I don't know that I have too much, so I want to, and especially express my thanks to Dr. DePonyo, Rochelle, Pete, George, our administrators as well, are shouldering a really heavy burden, trying to figure out how, how to lead everyone through these really uncertain times and I know that that's got to be very difficult. So again, just expressing my gratitude, hoping everyone stays safe and stays healthy, but beyond that, I don't have a whole lot.
All right, Mr. Bakodick.
All right, thank you. I do want to apologize a little bit in advance, I may go a little long tonight, but I wanted to start off first, I know, I don't know how widely it's been shared, but we did have a situation in our district that I wanted to kind of address, dealing with mental health. I know right now especially, everybody's going through a much more difficult time than we would normally be. everybody's going through a much more difficult time than we would normally be going through. You know, I think when this first started, we all thought we'd be out of this a lot quicker and that things would be back to normal a lot sooner. And yeah, I think everybody's had to deal with a completely different reality than what we're used to. Not seeing people that we'd normally see, not doing things that we'd normally do. My own, you know, life has been flipped upside down. I'm no longer meeting clients face to face, building their trust, going into court, talking to judges. I'm sitting in my basement, trying to ignore the noises coming from upstairs of my kids tearing around the upstairs while the judge is telling me something that I need to be paying attention to. It's not an ideal way to be practicing law. It's definitely not an ideal way to be educating kids, being at home. And it's definitely something that's taking its toll on a lot of us. And if it's something that we're all experiencing and we're getting to a point where, where things are getting difficult, we need to try and reach out to each other, even if it's somebody you know. I mean, I'm happy to take a phone call or a message from somebody. I know I've had to try and do that lately, too. You know, or even reach out for more help than you might otherwise be normally doing. Therapy can be a wonderfully helpful tool. You don't necessarily have to go too far into it, but just having someone that can listen to what you need, help you organize your thoughts and help you, you know, deal with the things that are going on in your life. It's a much better alternative to, to, to trying to take that all on yourself. So don't be afraid to do that if you are feeling that way. We don't want something to happen to somebody. We don't want to lose somebody for, for something that, you know, they might have been able to get help for. So it's an important thing. It's something that's affected me personally, so I wanted to share and make sure that everybody's aware of that. Please, please talk to somebody about it if it's something that's really bothering you or if things are really kind of, you know, wearing on you to a point where you need help. Don't be afraid to ask for it because people will respond. I mean, it's easy when you get in a position like that to think, you know, there's no way out, there's nothing that's going to get better, no one's going to care, no one's going to want to hear. I don't want to burden somebody with my problems, but I guarantee anyone would be happy to, to take on the role of listening and helping if it meant, you know, it would help somebody. So don't be afraid to ask if you need the help. The second regards to progress we've made at the school and our full return. You know, as a parent with two kids in school right now, doing the hybrid thing, you know, I know it's been a big concern. I know my wife has voiced it to me in our home about, you know, well, so and so's kids doing all this other stuff and, and we're not quite there yet. I know it's been difficult. I know we're not going to have a school year. Even if we went back to school full time, it wouldn't be what it's supposed to be. Obviously, Joe knows that, all of our teachers know that. They spent their whole lives working towards in-person instruction and now we can't do that because of this virus. And we have to, to change how we're delivering education. And doing it on the fly like this, I don't think any other position. I know for us in, in the legal field, it's been quite a challenge. We're still not offering jury trials right now in Macomb County. And it'll probably be over a year before some people can get a jury trial, even though it's a constitutionally guaranteed right in the United States. We've been having to change how education is delivered and doing it essentially overnight back in March, when the governor declared that schools should be closed. You know, we, we've worked hard. I know our educators are working hard. We're trying to figure this out. I mean, you can imagine all the startup companies that, that come up with an idea, try and take off and then completely crash and burn. Some of them succeed wildly, most of them don't. And we're kind of in that position right now of having to take something new and take off with it. And yeah, I, I think it's going to take some time. I know we have to be patient. We have to understand everybody's working hard. And our, our goal is the same. I think that's the other thing we have to keep in mind. We, we want our kids to learn. We want our kids to grow and develop. And we're trying to figure out a way we can do that safely so that our families are safe, our teachers are safe, our community is safe. And then lastly, I did want to say congratulations to some people that retired. Mrs. Patricia, who George was at, Huey, for 29 years. That's quite another achievement. I know we say that a lot here, but I also had a personal congratulations tonight. My father-in-law, technically stepfather-in-law, but I wouldn't consider him that. He's, he's another dad to me. Mark Merhaggy, he's a teacher at Utica Community Schools. He's retiring this year after 41 years as a teacher. He's been a person that, you know, I look up to as a, as just someone that I know. But I've talked to plenty of people that he's taught and worked with. And, you know, that it's, he's someone that inspires people. His students are inspired by him. One educator in particular, who's now principal at Utica High School, said it was Mark Merhaggy that inspired him to go into teaching. So I wanted to congratulate him after a fruitful career and hopefully he has a wonderful and well-deserved retirement. Thank you.
I don't have too much tonight. I just wanted to say, backing on some of what Michael said. Yes, please reach out if, if your family needs help. We're a Lake Shore family. We, we, we're Shorean Nation. We are a Lake Shore family. Contact the district. They have many avenues to be able to help you. And it, it, it's difficult being virtual. It's difficult being hybrid. It all just depends on our, our attitude and our position. I know my student is working out of his comfort zone. He likes to be in school. He likes to be in the classroom, face to face with the teacher. But he's learned, he's learning how to learn differently. And it's a, something you need to do in all phases of life. And so this is just a, a lesson in resiliency and, and, and working to, you know, still have your goal and just have to work at it differently. So again, if anyone needs help, please contact the, the, the administration building. You know, we are, our Shorean Nation is here for each other and we will, we will definitely help out. Thank you.
Sure, I'll just echo what, what's been said. Just to sort of reiterate my support for our plan. I, I've said this before, but I think that, you know, we made the best decision that we could have with the data that we had and the circumstances that we were in. And I'm obviously very encouraged to know that we haven't had any positive tests out of this point. I think that once we do go back full days for the AB schedule on October 5th, I think that will be very beneficial for our students that are in the building and doing face to face. And I think that as, as we take this sort of one step at a time, we're doing what's best for the health and safety of our entire community and also trying, of course, to deliver the best possible education to, to all of our students. So like Josh said, I'm extremely empathetic towards all of our parents in the district and all of our teachers that are working twice as hard, even though they work so hard in normal circumstances to, to provide that. I know my, my mother has converted my old bedroom to her kindergarten classroom. And, and while it's, while it's adorable, obviously it's heartbreaking too because I know how bad she wants to be in there with those kids. So that's, just thank you to everybody who's, you know, worked towards being resilient during this time. That's exactly what we need. And I think Joe said it right, that we all just need a little bit of grace at this time, even though it's an extremely, an extremely tough ask, for sure. And I don't want it to get lost. I know that, that Mike said it as well. But congratulations to Patricia Huey, 29 years. Anytime that somebody gives almost 30 years to, to this district is, is a very special person. So thank you, and that's all I have for tonight.
Keeps going away on that. Good evening, everyone. A lot of this has been said, but big thank you to Dr. DiPonio, the staff, the administration, the teachers. I know you guys are working tirelessly. I know we all want this over, but I really appreciate all the extra effort everybody is putting into all of this. For the parents, I know this is frustrating. I, I know it is. But I just want to emphasize what Dr. DiPonio said and what Daniel touched on. We've been in school almost a month, part, partly, 25%. We have had zero cases. That's something to, that's what we should be holding on to. I know it's frustrating. I do not have kids in the school, but my two kids did go through this school. And knowing my children, I know my daughter could have handled virtual. My son would probably be like, like your son and struggling. And I know it would, it would be a nightmare. So I understand where the frustration is coming from. We need to just, we need to just hang in there. I think the approach we're doing is a good approach. I know it seems slow, but I'd rather go a little bit slow and keep these zero cases than throw everybody back in. And then all of a sudden, we're on the news that we've got all these outbreaks. I know the kids are still socializing. I see it. My next door neighbor went out on a date Saturday night. I know it. I've seen it. I myself, I go to restaurants. I take the precautions, though. I wear the mask, I hand sanitize. I'm not living in fear. I'm still living my life, but I'm taking precautions. And that's just what we're trying to do. So I understand frustration. Please, everyone, as we said, we need a lot of flexibility this year. And we will get to where we want to be, but I think we just need to do it the way we're, we're doing it. And I applaud how we're doing it and, and the effort that everyone's putting in. So that is it. My, my condolences to the family of the student that passed away this past week. Please, anybody, as Ms. Munger said, reach out. Talk to somebody. Better to talk to somebody, call somebody at the school, call a friend, call a parent. Just please. So that is all I have for tonight, and thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you back on some of those, our maintenance and operations have done a great job keeping the buildings clean, sanitized, staff. And I know Joe. I have to be back to school. I have three grandkids in school. And it's not working out. And they go to a different school district and they're completely out of line. And it's not working for them. They are falling way behind. And I'm very worried about all the kids falling behind. I hope that we, we have a plan to assess the, the kids that are way behind and they do decide to let them come back so that we can get them up to speed. It just worries me, but it worries me with their, and Josh mentioned it, the emotional soul to take in these kids, educational. I just, I appreciate that Joe and his staff is doing to get, uh, get these kids back in school. So besides that, I want to thank all the people, the retirees and all the years of service. I think that's it, as far as I can go.
Okay. All right, my turn. I'm going to keep it a little bit brief. I'm not feeling all that well and just a little short of breath. Don't all misunderstand that, a little asthma touching in today. But anyway, um, it, it, the air feels a little different today. I, I get that the staff, I know you've been in touch with some teachers. I, I get that the staff, I get that our families, I understand our students. It's, you know, the first couple of weeks was a little bit different. I think everybody was just sort of like railing, you know? Let's just do it. Now I, I think people are feeling fatigued. People all over are feeling fatigued. They're, they're feeling stressed and they're feeling fatigued by the process, which I highly value and still appreciate the large number of people that we had participate in helping us develop our plan. So it's, it's not a criticism of the plan or where we're at. It's just, I think, a reality that people are feeling fatigued. And it is okay. Dr. DiPonio sent out an email earlier today to the staff. I don't know if everybody here had a chance to see it, but it was a bit of encouragement in reminding ourselves that it, it's okay to feel fatigued and give yourself a moment. You know, take, take time if you need a little bit of time. We truly can't just always be, you know, full speed ahead. At some point, you got to let up a little bit and take care of yourself, too. And it's, it's important that, as several have said tonight, it's important that we take care of ourselves so that we can be here to take care of each other. Obviously, as you see, you know, we're a small representation of the community and it's, we have differing opinions amongst the small group of us. It's really hard to serve our community, knowing that we, we aren't going to represent everybody with every decision we make. I probably tend to be a little bit more along your frame of mind and your thoughts personally, but I, my mindset is representing the entire community. And it's a, it's just a, it does feel like an impossible task to balance, I would say, both sides, but we all know that it's really a continuum. There's one, one side to the other with a lot of people in between. And we are doing the best we can. I'm doing what I feel I can do in good conscience. You know? I, I, I put a lot of faith in the large committee of people that, that brought us feedback and input. I would say I am extremely frustrated that I do not know what it takes to get to stage five. So anybody that wants to call on the governor and try to find that information out, I would love to be in the loop. I don't care if I'm not there tomorrow. Tell me what it looks like. I don't know if I'm a step away or a mile away. And as a board president representing the community, that's very frustrating. So I understand that, I'll, I'll give the governor the benefit of the doubt. I'm sure that she's doing the best she can. However, with decisions, I should say. However, I think information can be shared. I think spreading a little light on where we've been, where we're going, what her mindset is, would be fair information to be shared. So with that, clearly, I'm a little more frustrated and a little more weary than I usually am because I try not to take this kind of negative path. But, but seriously, anybody that wants to reach out to our representatives and our governor and try to get some detail, that would be fantastic. Or at least they'll understand that we want it. Whether we get it or not, they'll understand that we want it. And with that, again, seriously, take a minute if you need a minute. Lift each other up if you've got the strength to lift somebody up because obviously we're surrounded by each other and we all need that lift. So that is it for me, and we will take a motion to adjourn. I'll go with Mrs. DeLong and Mr. Colling. All right, thank you, everybody. Have a good night.